Welcome to the January 20, 2016 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. At this time, I request that you silence all of your cell phones or any other devices you might have, and then please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Like a motion to open the meeting?
We're moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Applications for rezoning and conditional use permit heard during tonight's meeting will be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during the meeting. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommends on the application, recommendations on the application will be submitted to the St. Charles County Council for their final decision on the items. The individual items and bills for these applications are scheduled to be introduced at the Monday, February 8, 2016 County Council meeting. Applications for preliminary plat heard during tonight's meeting will also be voted on by the Planning and Zoning Commission during this meeting. The vote this evening on the preliminary plats is final. Only a recommendation for denial of a preliminary plat would be heard before the County Council. The following documents are introduced as a matter of record for the public hearing and regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Unified Development Ordinance of St. Charles County, including zoning maps, the year 2025 master plan for St. Charles County, which includes the year 2025 Future Land Use Plan map. Give you a little roadmap for tonight. What we do is we read the rezoning or CUP or zoning change into record. We then ask applicant to come up and present to us. After that, we open it up to the public for comment and for or against. We then, after that, close the public comment portion. We bring the applicant back up to ask any questions that either the commission has or possibly that you guys have had and they try to answer it. So just kind of give you an idea. If you're going to speak tonight, we ask that you fill out a speaker card either before or after and hand that to Sheila over here so we can have a record of it. So at this time, I'm going to go ahead and start with the first one. It's rezoning 15, 118. It's a rezoning request for 4040 South Old Highway 94. It is currently zoned R1E Single Family Residential District. The rezoning request is C2 General Commercial District. The applicant is Darrell Kisker. Property owner is Lou Ellen Kisker. The area is currently 1.6 acres located on the south side of South, on the south side of South Old Highway 94, approximately 300 feet west of Jungerman Road. It's in Council District 7. Staff.
Thank you, sorry. Okay. The subject property and the property to the east is zoned R1E Single Family Residential. And the property to the west is C2 General Commercial District and R3B with a PUD planned unit development. That zoning is also found to the south at R3B with PUD. And to the north is incorporated in the city of St. Peters. Surrounding land uses include single-family residences to the southeast and west, and there's also a daycare center to the west and to the north is commercial uses. The Future Land Use Plan does show the property to be commercially used. In viewing the application, we researched the proposal to rezone the property and found that the C2 does meet the Future Land Use Plan for the county. Additionally, this site has a nonconforming use of grading company at the site that it's illegal, nonconforming use that has been there since before zoning was enacted in St. Charles County in 1959. And there were a couple of options that they could do when they were building this building, and we thought it was just the best way to handle. They, I'm sorry, they want to build a building to house equipment in for their use. And since they're illegal, nonconforming use, there are a couple avenues they could have gone, and they chose to pursue the rezoning to the C2 so that the property meets with the Future Land Use Plan for that area. So staff is recommending approval of the zoning change from R1E to C2, and we did have one letter in opposition from Elena Williams. Any questions of staff?
Any questions? If not, we're going to go ahead and ask applicant to come up if they'd like to speak on this matter. Raise your right hand for me, please. Do you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
I'm Darrell Kisker. Currently reside at 216 Willis Drive, St. Peters, Missouri.
Go ahead, Darrell.
I'm the current owner of Don Kisker Grading. It's been a family-run grading operation for many years. My father, Don, passed away in 99. This property we're talking about this evening has been in the family since 1941. And we're looking to build another building, a new building, to house some trailers, various equipment indoors, and that's what brings us here this evening to rezone and move forward with a new building construction.
Okay. You guys have any questions of Darrell? Seeing none, we're going to go ahead and open it up for public comment.
Very good. Thank you.
We'll bring you back. Went ahead and closed applicant's portion. We're going to open up to the public. Is there anybody here in the audience that would like to speak on this matter for the public? Come on up.
Just had a couple of questions.
Come on up. Hold on, just come on up to microphone first, sorry. Right here, right on the podium. Right at the podium, right behind you, yeah. Raise your right hand.
Okay.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
And what, state your name and address for the record, please?
Gail Wellner, 4023 Mary Ridge Lane.
Thanks, Gail. Go ahead.
My husband and I have lived there 33 years, and just a question. Somebody had mentioned, so the property's not for sale, you're just going to build a building on there? That's the only...
Gail? Gail, go ahead and ask us. We'll bring them back up.
Okay.
That's okay. It's a good question.
Okay.
And do you have anything else for them?
No, I guess, you know, right now, the, you know, that's, it's good if they're looking to build a building because it's a lot of equipment and things like that. But, you know, we have a, we have a fence that kind of, on our property that kind of, you know, covers a lot of that from our perspective.
Are you at the bottom, then?
4023.
Right there? Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, so, and, you know, it's never been horribly noisy or anything like that, so that's all been good. But I guess my concern is it's just a building and it's not going to be sold or used for something else. I guess that's our main concern.
Okay. Good question.
Okay.
Thank you. So anybody else like to speak on this matter? Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name and address for the record.
I'm Rita Cochrane. I'm at 4037 Mary Ridge.
Go ahead.
And the property has for-sale signs on it. So I'd like to know, are they selling the property and then going to build a building for someone else?
I think it's the house for sale, isn't it? It's right there?
There's two for-sale signs up.
Yeah, but I think it's that house that's on the left. It's not the actual property we're talking about?
Yeah, it's their property.
Yeah, we'll find out, but I'm pretty sure when I drove by was the house.
And I live behind the Baptist Church, The Realm, and they were parking their commercial vehicles behind our house, and they came to take down my fence one day because it was falling down. And then we found out, if you're parking commercial vehicles behind a residential property, you have to put up a fence. So are they going to put up a privacy fence behind these houses? I'd like to know that, too.
Okay. All right. Anything else?
No, I want to know if this is legitimate because they got a for-sale sign up.
Okay.
You know, and there's, there's all sorts of junk behind their property. It's, it will lower our value of our property, and I don't like that.
Sure. Understand.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public comment, and we're going to go ahead and bring Darrell back up so he can answer those questions if, could.
The property she's speaking of that is for sale is not our property. That is 4050.
Right.
Old Highway 94 South, we're 4040. We have nothing to do with that property that is for sale there, and we don't anticipate selling any of our property. This has been a family-run, mom-and-pop-type grading operation for many years. I have two sons in the business also with me today, so we don't anticipate any changes in the operation at all, just to bring some things indoors is what we're looking to do. And again, we don't have anything to do with 4050. We're speaking of 4040.
So what about the parking behind The Realm and all that? Is that you guys doing that, or do you know?
That's the Baptist church, I believe, as she stated. I think that's correct.
You're not doing that, though, right?
No.
Right.
That's the church buses that they use there.
Okay. Yeah, I know, I know. Okay. Any guy, hold on. Anybody questions for Darrell, you guys? No? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and close the meeting. Is there any thing you guys want to discuss on this?
Pretty straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
I would make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Mr. McBride, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Fromm votes yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Hammond is not here. Mr. Setley?
Yes.
And Mr. Griffin is not here. That's one, two. It's seven to nothing that it passes. We're going to move on to the next one. It's a conditional use permit request at 3707 Veterans Memorial Parkway, CUP 15, and it's dash 11. The applicant is Pinuli Rajah Clement, and the property owner currently is Bros Heckman Incorporated. The current request at use is an automobile sales, and the zoning right now is C2 Commercial District, and the area is 7.8 acres. The location is on the southeast corner of Veterans Memorial Parkway and Arco Drive. It's in Council District 5. Staff?
Thank you. Okay, the subject site and the property to the east is C2 General Commercial District. There's also, this is a deep property, there's also R1E Single Family Residential and C2 in the city of St. Charles to the east of the property. To the south is in the city of St. Charles, and it's zoned R1E Single Family Residential. And to the west is the city of St. Charles, and it's zoned C2 General Business District. To the north, of course, is Interstate 70. Uses in the area include a single-family residences to the south, and there's some single-family residential to the east, and also to the east is automobile sales and boat and RV storage, and then to the west is automobile sales and rental. Future land use plan does show this property to remain commercial. On the background on this, this site was used for a number of years for mobile home park, and there's currently RV storage in the southern end of the site. I'm sorry, not mobile home park, mobile home sales. And there's RV storage on the southern part of the site. The petitioner is wanting to use the front portion of the site for automobile sales. And staff has looked at this conditional use with all the criteria in the Unified Development Ordinance and find that, we find that this area along Veterans Memorial Parkway, there's a number of used car places along this strip. We find that this use is compatible with those uses, and I wanted to show you. I'm sorry, my computer's a little slow tonight. We are, we are recommending approval, but our approval is subject to, oh man, sorry. Our approval is subject to them only using the front portion of the site. I don't know if this one's any better, but there's, located in this area, there's a gate, and so the used car sales would only be in this portion of the site. The use in the southern portion of the site would remain as is. So staff is recommending approval of the use of used car sales at this site. And the approval is subject to the following conditions. No work on site, including paving, additional gravel, or parking vehicles shall be permitted until a site plan is approved by the St. Charles County Community Development Department and all proper permits are received. Customer and employee parking must be provided and signed for the public to visit the site in compliance with Unified Development Ordinance parking regulations. No vehicle inventory will be permitted in those parking spaces. Lighting shall not obstruct or interfere with travel along Veterans Memorial Parkway or cast upon any residential properties. Vehicles displayed for sale shall be parked in a manner that each vehicle is independently maneuverable. Vehicle sales shall be permitted on the front, approximately 2.3 acres of the property. This area is a front 490 feet of the property as measured from the existing fence and gate to the right-of-way of Interstate 70 along the west property line. The existing pole sign must be removed. A new sign may be installed that meets sign code regulations with appropriate permits. Number seven, no conditional use shall be in active use until all conditions of the approval have been met. And in any case where a conditional use is not in place and in active use within two years from the date of granting and/or in accordance with the terms of the conditional use originally granted or subsequently amended, then without further action by the Planning and Zoning Commission and/or the County Council, the conditional use or the authorization thereof shall be null and void. And we did have one letter of concern from Mr. Hoff. Any questions of staff?
Yeah, I have one. I assume this is going to be leased to these people who sell cars there?
Um, I'm sorry, I don't remember. We'll have to ask the petitioner when it comes forward.
Well, it looks like it. We will, we'll address that, but my question is basically, if that is transferred to another person, another person, would the conditional use go with that, or would they have to come down here and reapply?
No, the conditional use permit goes with the property, not with the ownership.
Forever.
Or, yes.
Like a deed. All right. Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
What, how do you define a repair, a repair facility? How extensive is that going to be? Is it going to be, at the top it says, does it plan any changes?
Well, the repair facility is not really at issue, a repair, automobile repair facility is a permitted use in the C2 district.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so at issue is the sales of vehicles, like trucks, things like that at the property.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring the applicant up, if you would, if you want to speak on this. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record.
Pinuli Rajah Clement, 1153 Talbridge Way, St. Charles, Missouri, 63303.
Go ahead.
First of all, I would like to thank the Planning and Zoning staff for recommending the conditional use for the used car sales, and that's what we'll be doing over there. We'll make the place look a lot nicer and sell cars, used cars. I would like to request that the Planning and Zoning staff will reconsider the taking down of the signage. I know that's one of the recommendations. The signage is, was grandfathered in there from back in 1980s, and that's one of the main attraction to the site, to the property, is the nice signage. And if the city staff would allow me to keep the signage, I would like to make it look a lot nicer and better, and whatever the staff recommends me to do to make the sign look nicer, I'll be bored and happy to do that.
Anything else?
That's it.
Guys have any questions for him? So there was a question down here about the lease, leasing the property. Can you answer that for us?
Well, there was, that was the lead-in to the second question, whether it was transferable or not.
Oh, you just want to know that.
Satisfied, yes.
So you're leasing the property?
I am leasing the property with an option to purchase.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. And you don't want to take that sign down, that big sign?
I would like to keep that sign. That's one of the main attractions, and I would make whatever I need to do to make the sign look nicer. It's not that nice right now, but remodel the sign.
Question for staff, to get a permit for a sign, which I do quite a bit. If he would redo that sign, he'd have to come in and with the drawings and whatever and get a permit?
We, we allow a change of face of sign without a permit, but the way this sign is constructed, I don't know that you can change the face of the sign without, like, removing a structural item and having to deal with the electricity and stuff, and that would trigger a sign permit. So, you know, so like normally, if you're in a strip center and you have a box sign with the plastic, you know, advertisement, they just flip those out, and that doesn't require a permit to change the sign face. And this, this sign's a little different. It's a...
It used to be Bros', wasn't it?
Yeah, this was Bros', yeah.
I'm familiar with the sign.
Yeah. Yeah, and I think they recently redid the reader board on the sign, and we allow reader boards, but when a sign that, a sign on a commercial property that advertises more than one business can be up to 300 square feet in size. Otherwise, if it's advertising one business, it has, it can only be 150 square feet in size.
It's a big sign there.
This sign's a big sign.
Yeah. Been there forever.
Yeah.
So in this particular instance, then, this sign's probably been there for 30 or 40 years.
Yeah.
There's nothing to do with the grandfather clause in it.
Well, no, the sign, the sign would be grandfathered in, but when we have a conditional use permit like this, we can, we can put conditions on it.
Right.
And the commission can remove conditions, so, so, I mean, that was staff's preference to, to update the sign and, and bring it into compliance with the regulations.
So where will you be loading and unloading vehicles onto the property? That, that area is pretty restricted. I mean, you got the front road and that service road.
It would be at the back of the property. It's big enough. There's car dealerships all around me. To the left of me is enterprise car sales. To the left, that is E-Mage Car Sales. To the right of me is a couple small dealerships, and then we got the big auto center of St. Charles. It's all car dealership strip, and everybody unloads cars there, but I got a big enough property that the truck can go at the back of my property and unload over there without blocking any traffic whatsoever.
And the reason I'm asking, I had a call from the person that has a business on Arco Drive, and he said that those dealerships down there have been pulling tractor-trailers down there, and they unload their vehicles, and it makes it a one-lane road. Up on Arco.
Absolutely. No other dealership, correct, no other dealership around there has the space that I would have.
Right.
I have my own driveway, as she pointed out on the, on the map. That's just my driveway, that the trucks can come right in there at the back and unload. That wouldn't block any traffic flow at all whatsoever.
And I saw on your drawings that you're planning to come out on the service road, too. Are you, are you going to, can he come and ask for exits out off Arco or Arco Road?
Well, there's an existing entrance right onto Veterans Memorial Parkway.
Yeah, I know.
I don't think he would be using Arco at all because actually, his, his driveway going into his property is larger than Arco Drive.
Okay.
So we don't have any problem with that, and the state will allow them to continue to use that existing access, but, but it is up to the, up to MoDOT as far as that access. But I, I would be really surprised if the state had them do anything with that access.
Again, I've had calls from people who have businesses down that road, and that's one of their concerns is having that traffic come out because they're test-driving vehicles and just running up and down that road to test-drive vehicles. And what they've had is, just so you know, they've had a problem with some of those dealerships, not this one. I'm not saying that, but there's, there's a couple other ones, or those used car lots.
Oh, there's probably seven.
Right, a lot of them. And they've been using that road as a test-drive road, so they'll go up and down at 60 miles an hour trying to test-drive their vehicles. So it's become somewhat of a safety hazard.
And, and that needs to be relayed to the police.
And they do, and they have, and they've had police sit down, and then nobody uses it, of course, because they know the police are sitting there. So I don't know, is there a conditional use we can put on this that says they can't use that road or whatever, or how do you, I mean, can you do any of that kind of thing?
It's a, it's a public road.
I know, I know. So I'm asking.
You want a gate?
Yeah.
Yeah. Would it be, would it be a public road? I, I would, you know, I mean, then where?
Again, I'm asking on behalf of the people who currently have businesses on that road right now. And they've been there for 30 years, so they've got a problem down there. And one of the things that we, you know, is the Planning and Zoning Committee, we've got to take in consideration the people that are currently there, too.
Yeah, I, I truly understand. I, I travel, I travel this stretch, and I might be one of the people that's driving a little fast, and I won't be test-driving a vehicle. So I'm not going to say it's just the people test-driving.
Well, yeah. It's a dead-end road, though.
But this is on Arco.
It's okay. We got it. Yeah.
Oh, on Arco, okay.
This is just on Arco Road, is what we're talking about.
Yeah, well, then if, I don't, I don't know the status of Arco, because that's in the city of St. Charles.
Right. No, I understand.
So I don't know if it's a private or public.
So what I'm asking is, are they going to be able to knock that, because right now, if you bring it up, where the fence is along Arco Road, there's a piece of the fence that's knocked out. Will they be able to do an entrance there once this is approved?
No, that fence isn't on Arco. Arco is...
No, it's on Arco Road, isn't it?
The fence piece that's missing is right here, and this is Arco Lane here.
I got you. Okay. So that's actually a little further up.
Yeah, so there's a little strip there, so...
There's a, I got you. Okay. So that's their entrance right there in the picture.
Yeah.
I got you.
Yeah, so, um...
That's a little different.
Yeah, I...
Yeah.
There's no connection.
Yeah, I don't know what the status of Arco is. I mean, they don't have direct access to it.
Right.
I would be using Arco at all.
They couldn't even get direct access. Okay. And that's why I'm asking. I'm just asking. That's, because it was one of his concerns.
Yeah, sorry, I misunderstood which road you were talking about.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
What, currently, what does the sign say, and what do you want to change it to?
The sign says Bros', Mobile Home Sales, and I'm just going to change it to my name and make it look nicer, redo the plating to make it look nice and presentable. But the signage was one of the main attractions to the place for me, and I can make it look a lot nicer. It's a little bit tacky right now. The wording is coming out, so I can make it look real nice and get rid of all the old wordings. I can make it plain and simple, just my name.
Bros' still in business?
No. It's, how tall is that sign? It's taller than everything around there, isn't it?
Yeah.
And then, so we're asking them to remove it for...
Forty-five, 50 feet.
Because of our ordinance, though, right?
I think our ordinance allows up to 45 feet in height. The height probably won't change drastically. It was just more of the size and just the, the fact that the sign is, you know, showing its age.
The sign is eyesore right now, but I can make it look, redo it.
Yeah, I've been by it. Yeah.
So, whatever you guys want to do.
Yeah. So what do you guys think on that one?
From a business standpoint, I can sure understand why he wants that sign.
Yeah, I want to give him some... Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Robert.
Well, let's move it on here.
Yeah, we will.
Come back to this.
I was just going to add that there's, there's an existing nonconformity clause concerning signs in our ordinance. And basically, it says that any nonconforming sign shall be brought into compliance when structural alterations, damage repairs, or routine maintenance succeed 50% of the current[1676.73] 50% of the current fair market value of the sign, or when the sign is relocated. So basically, there's already a standard in place that regardless of what might be even the conditional use permit, it'd still have to come into conformity if any of those, if things happen.
I got you.
If changes were made that exceeded 50% of its value, or if it were relocated.
Okay, got you.
The question that becomes with the conforming, excuse me, with the conditional use permit, he would be required to make, to redo the sign to current. As opposed to having the fact question of is, is the nonconforming going to be lost because of the alterations? That's really the difference.
I love legal stuff. All right. Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and open up the public. If anyone is here that would like to speak on this matter, you can please come forward in. Don't forget to fill out a speaker's card. Come on up, sir. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record, please.
Bob Barrett, 3730 Banbury Drive, St. Charles.
Thanks, go ahead, Bob.
And you'll have to excuse me, it's going to be short. I don't do this very much. I live at 3730. You've got the memorial side of this thing, which doesn't affect me, and you've got a really, really old picture there. So just for clarification purposes, all that, those mobile homes there are gone.
Right.
Near the road there, that's all vacant now. And the actual sign that's presented right now is two-dash-four acres for sale. That's what it says right now. So just as a side channel, I wonder if Brof is going to be here tonight to back up the applicant to see where their, where their plans are. He says lease with purchase, maybe. I don't know what that means. Tomorrow they re, they purchase it, 10 years from now, I don't know what that means. He hasn't said anything about that. The other side is, is we got this letter, and the only reason I'm here is because this thing says that this letter goes out to people that are within 500 feet of whatever conditional thing you're trying to do. I don't really understand all that. But the fact of the matter is, is that if I live at the other end of this thing, and your letter says, outlines this whole area here, which used to be Brof's Mobile Home Sales. Subsequently, since I've lived there, they've run in a trucking operation, which we got that straightened out just because they were backing trucks in and out of there all hours of the night, 24 hours a day, disturbing that gentleman's sleep, my sleep, my wife's sleep. We worked it out with them and said, hey, can you move them up toward the road so that they can't be work, running their operation all night long? They took care of that, I appreciate that. But whenever this guy says, excuse me, this gentleman here says that he's going to do something on a frontage, and your letter has got this showing as a parcel, I'm a little concerned about that, because they got a two-to-four acre for sale, he wants to lease with a possible purchase, they got seven acres on here, where's that other five acres? Well, let me finish my question, okay? They got seven acres on here, so I don't know, and again, you'll have to school me because I'm not real smart, but I don't know if this is like a foot in the door, and they're going to open up a used car lot, and then they're going to have a repair place, and then, whoa, wait a minute, they want to utilize the other part of this designated area. The next thing you know, two, three, four, five years from now, they're in here trying to find, put, park some old cars coming closer to our property. I don't know how all that works. Is that unreasonable? I'm sorry if it is, but for just an old timer that don't understand much, does that make any sense that somebody can answer those questions?
Sure.
And then one last question is, you guys are talking about the road there, Arco Boulevard? Now, there is an entranceway there where they back the mobile homes in and the trucking operation that's going on there right now, and then the RV sale, or RV shopping, and they've still got some mobile homes there that they're selling, so I guess ultimately they're going to get out of sales because they're going to, they're going to give the sign to this gentleman to put up a used car lot, so they're not going to advertise Brof's anymore. So like I said, I'm just wondering, a year from now, two years from now, since Brof's, maybe they just want to move to Florida and just give everything to this gentleman here, and we got nothing to, but the future to look at, and I don't want to be up here a year from now, two years from now saying, hey, you guys, you know, they just used this to get, get in the front door, and the next thing you know, they, they own seven acres, and they're back there parking junk cars by my fence.
Okay, Bob, so let's-
Does that make any sense or not?
Sure, let's let him answer the question for us.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the room that wants to speak on this matter? Please come forward. Raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And state your name and address for the record.
Scott Williams, 3738 Banbury. I'm also the, on the homeowners association board for Oxford Crossing Neighborhood, which is the adjacent neighborhood to the south side of the property. My question just arise, it's kind of off of Bob's, is the lease with the, with the option to purchase for the entire seven-plus acres, or is that just for the front portion, portion of the property? We, we have had some concerns with the use of the back half of the property before with, with the trucking and some things going on that were some noise issues, and I know some other neighbors raised some potential lighting issues if there were lights from the signs that would be coming in through. That area is not well, well wooded or anything, so our, our back windows are right, right up into the back of that property, and of course, we knew that when we bought the property, we knew what was there, but any additional lighting or anything that would, would come into our, our homes might be an issue as far as the signage or anything in the front of the property. I certainly don't have any concern with what they do that front half, but, but all of that vacant half that's currently RV storage, any additional use for that in the future would, would be a bit of a concern. And I, I know, I, I think I understand that Arco probably is, this isn't the place to talk about this, but if people are using that for test-driving, I have a two-year-old and a six-year-old that play right behind there, and that's a concern for me if there's going to be additional traffic on that road because of automobile usage, so, thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Anybody else? Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
State your name and address for the record.
Carrie Ifrig. I reside at 3734 Banbury Drive. That's the south side of the property that you're in question. I just want to kind of reiterate and reaffirm the concerns that both Scott and Bob made with, concerns about future use for the property, whether or not what this lease purchase is in regards to Scott's issue with the lighting. The lighting has changed over the years. We've been there 15 years. It used to not be what it is today. Darkening curtains and all sorts of things have been put up to, to keep the light out. I don't know if there's anything that can be done with that, and I, if he's going to stay in the front of the property, his lighting probably won't be an issue, however, if there is some, I guess the question is, is the whole property in question, or is it just the front half of that? And if it is the whole property, then, then I would like some things to be addressed with the lighting issue. Question I had, I believe he currently owns Rock Road Automotive, I believe, if I'm, when I researched, I don't know if he still has it or not. If he does, if, is this going to be in addition to that or in replacement of that? You know, will those clients be coming over this way? I'm just curious for my own sake. And I wanted to clarify something about the repair facility. You mentioned something about, I don't know if there's, if he's planning on building a repair facility, where that would be. And again, I think the whole lease purchase, is it the whole property or the front of the property sheds a lot of issues to us being in the back, you know, being in the back with the trucking company, and I don't know if y'all know there's a trucking company running at Brof's Mobile Homes, but there is, so you might want to look into that. But being in the back of the property, we tend to be the funnel, and we're the bottom of that funnel, and we just have concern about that in the future, so.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Carrie. So if there's anybody that has something new, we've kind of got an idea of what your concerns are. I'd like to bring the applicant up, but if you've got something new you have concerns about, you want to come speak about, it's great. Come on up. Raise your right hand. You swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
I'm Sue Ifrig, the wife of the gentleman, gentleman that just spoke, and I actually have been in contact with the police on a number of occasions for Brof's because of the activity that goes on at 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the morning, midnight, and which, and which, which right now, there are two trailers that are used to, as a storage that a gentleman comes back, or somebody comes back and forth at all hours of day or night to put things in there and then leaves. But it's very loud, it's very noisy, and when I call the police, it's either going to be St. Charles County, then it's St. Charles City, and they actually don't have access to anything there because there is a door or a, a gate that prevents them from going back to investigate. So the best they can do is actually catch them when they're in the middle of being, being noisy. The same thing is the concern about Arco Drive because you can't catch these people driving 60, 70 miles an hour, and that's very loud, and again, those are happening all hours, day and night. And so when you get up and you call them, those cars have already-
Sure.
Have already done what they're doing. So that noise factor, which is all hours of the night, is concerning, especially if somebody else is going to add other things in, in that area. Secondly, yes, and we talked about the lighting, but it's very bright, and so every, that, our bedroom is right up against that light, and so it just bolts right into our bedroom every night, so.
So what did you buy back there?
I'm sorry?
When did you buy back behind there?
We bought in 80, oh, I'm sorry, 96.
Okay.
And those lights were not there in 96, so.
Okay, thank you.
That's all I, thank you.
Raise your right hand. Yeah, you swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Tim Sights, 20 Expedition Trail Court. So we're across, right across from the, where you see-
Yeah.
12, okay. I just, my big question for him is, what are the plans for the back end? Because you said basically he can't change that, but what is the purpose of the back part of the property, and what is he going to do about the lighting?
Okay.
Because I think, you know, like, everybody's biggest concern, but we really haven't clarified what the back part of the property is going to be, is it going to stay with RVs, or does he have another use?
Okay, thanks, Tim.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other person that wants to speak on this matter? You got something new to, to, okay, great, come on up. Raise your right hand. Swear to tell the truth, nothing but the truth?
Yeah, I do.
And state your name and address for the record.
Mike, Mike Hamerly, and I own like three or four different properties in the neighborhood, but 235 and 245 is mine, and then one of them down in a subdivision down there on Fairview. I've got a rental property down there on Fairview.
Okay.
And I was wondering about, with Brof's, has Brof sold it yet or not?
I don't know that.
I mean, there's a different name on here for owner, is that, has it changed hands?
It could be the person that bought it a long time ago, I don't know, we'll have, we'll have the person, we'll have those questions answered, though.
Has somebody bought the property or not?
Right now, this is the current property owner is Brof Heckman.
Still, yeah, that's a new owner, I guess. Do you know how long he's on it?
I don't know, it could be a kid that inherited it, too. I don't, I don't know.
But anyway, I thought Brof's still on it till just, you know, maybe it just changed hands, but like, no, they've got these great big lights back there, and my home is probably 500 foot from the property, from their property.
Sure.
And the lights are so bright, it, they have them that bright in there, but Brof was good enough to turn them down to people at the Mobile Home Sales.
Right.
But the light's still up, but Brof's turned off a couple of them, but you had to shade your eyes in my house 500 foot away.
Sure, so, so Mike, this gentleman's going to have nothing to do with those lights that are back there currently.
Of what?
This gentleman right here is going to have nothing to do with the lights that are in the back of the lot.
Well, no, I even, well, the front's bright though down in Fairview down there.
At the front of the road on North Service Road?
Is there a way to control the lights on these used car lots and stuff?
On the front of the road? You're talking about on, on North Service Road?
Well, no, my home down in Fairview, the ones on the fr- I have a, the used car lot's so bright you can read the, you can, anywhere around the house, you can read a newspaper at night.
Is it this lot or the ones that are currently, the used car lots that are currently there that you're having a problem with?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we have nothing to do with those lots.
Okay.
Those are in the city of St. Charles, I believe.
Well, I was concerned with the lights and-
So you should call the city.
And, and the fence back there, there's a chain-link fence now, are they going to put something in the back? I mean, you're saying it's not, not now, but if they put, like, even now they need a, like a, what do you call it, privacy fence? It's just a chain-link fence?
Mm-hmm.
And, but anyway, I was just wondering about that, and the water drainage at the bottom of my property runs across 235 and 245 to get going toward the creek down there, and if they pave anything there, it's going to make more water runoff.
Okay.
Right now, it's just gravelled.
Okay.
And are they going to still have the, the two entrances right there onto the service road? Right now, they got Arco Drive and Brof's comes out. Still going to be that way, are they going to make more or what?
No, they're going to be the existing.
Same drive?
Yep.
Okay.
Anything else, Mike?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So if anybody has anything new to come up and speak about, we've kind, pretty much got, we've already got your testimony.
I have a very funny question real quick. Can you just outline-
You need to come up to the microphone, I'm sorry.
Just, can you outline for us the diff, where the county is and where the city is on this property? It's kind of a, it's a really confusing line.
Yeah, I know, it's hard, hard to tell.
The purple's in the city and the tan is county.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and close the public comment. Let's go ahead and bring the applicant back up and see if you can answer a few of the questions that we, the residents have had, and see if the staff can answer some of the other ones, too.
I would like to mention that my goal is to be a good neighbor, and I'll do everything I can to make the neighbors happy. I would like to just mention that.
So they're asking, I don't know if you can even answer them.
In terms of the question, I'm only going to get the, the front portion of the property. The back portion is still going to be Brof's. I never heard about the trucking company back there. I don't think they're going to do any of that. I think they're just going to do storage, but I have no idea. My goal is just the front, the front half of it, that's it.
You're just going to be using that front two-point whatever acres?
Correct, that's it.
You have nothing to do with that back section?
No, correct.
And the lease purchase is to purchase that-
Just the front.
Two acres? How long is the lease?
Four acres.
Okay, four acres, so how long is the lease?
It's three years.
So you have to buy it after three years?
Correct.
Or vacate? Can you continue to lease?
I've, I've got one option to renew for five years.
Okay.
That's it, and I can buy it in between those times, just the front half of it.
Any other questions for applicant?
Where does your, is exactly halfway down, I mean, what, is there a point that you can define where your property stops, or your leased property stops? Do you know where that is?
It's, it should be right after the, not too far from that fence, that's it.
It's after the, the fence and the buildings, I think.
Correct, it's, it's around that area, correct. And again, I'll just be using the front of it, nothing to do with the back.
So Tom, if you look at the drawing, see the property right here?
Yeah.
You can kind of, that's kind of where it's at.
Or the subject property?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, oh, okay, I got you.
This map, it's right about 137.7.
Right, yeah.
Look on this map.
Yeah, that's what, that's what he's on, yeah, that's what he's on. So what about some of the other questions that some of the people had? Can you guys answer the, like, what's going on back there? That's the other thing, is there, is there, are they conforming to the current use for that property?
They are using it as storage, which was the same thing that- They are using it as storage, which was the same thing that the...
That Bros had.
Yeah, that Bros had.
Right.
So that's how we had interpreted it.
Okay.
Yeah, and neighborhood preservation has been out to the site, and, you know, I mean, now I can say is that we can certainly have them keep an eye on it.
But there's no restrictions when they can use it, right?
No.
Yeah.
I've got a question. So if they're using the back part of the property for storage, well, if I have something stored on the back part, will I be driving through your car lot?
Correct, and so the driveway that I have is bigger than the ARCO drive, actually, so they'll be driving through that to enter back there.
So at 2:00 in the morning, I can come through your car lot, you're not going to have any type of, any gate to block for...
No, sir, no. I would like people to come and browse and take a look around.
Okay, so there'll be nothing to divide your leased property with the back half? Like, you're not putting the fence across the property to block off?
No, no.
So what do you ask? What do you ask, and I'm kind of curious? Are you just looking to, so they don't come through ARCO, then?
No, they can't, there's no way to get through ARCO, but I was just wondering if...
Why is he keeping it open, or?
Yeah, because if I want to go, hotwire them one on. Not an easy way. I don't know, do I have a gate in front of them?
All right, so you're asking, usually there's a gate in front of a dealership that closes it off.
Correct, I wouldn't be doing that.
You can't close it off, they're not going to let you close it off because they need access to it.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Don't put that in the record.
Yeah, okay, too late. Any other questions, you guys?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, guys, the public comment's already closed.
I have a question. You said four acres, but four acres goes well beyond the existing gate on the property. So, if you can look on that aerial photo, like, what I've outlined here is like, 3.8...
I thought it had 2. something in there.
2.3.
It's 2.3 acres.
That's 3, well, that's what staff...
That's for the vehicle sales.
That is what staff measured on the map.
I got you.
And so what's highlighted here is 3.87, or almost four acres in size, and so I guess we're, sorry, I clicked on something I shouldn't have. So I was just questioning if you're really getting four acres, then that's putting you back, halfway back on the site, and I didn't know that you were going beyond the gate.
I will only be using up till the gate.
Okay.
It's where I'll be using, that's it, I wouldn't be using anything back there.
Okay, so you're only purchasing like, a couple acres, then, or?
No, I think you're saying, purchasing four acres, lease purchasing four.
You're purchasing the full, you're purchasing half of the site, and only going to be putting cars on the front?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So in answer to the Publix question, we advertised the public hearing for the entire parcel because we didn't have a legal description of the area that he was purchasing at this time.
Okay.
And so that is why we put the condition on that it's the front 2.3 acres that will be used for vehicle sales, and limited the vehicle sales. So if later he wants to expand his vehicle sales to more area, then we are going to, he's going to have to come back for a conditional use permit. We will notify everyone within 500 feet, and so everyone will be invited to public hearing about this, about the property. So that's why, yeah, we understand it's kind of confusing, but we didn't really have any other way to advertise it, to make it plainer, so.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Robert.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Jan, but the question about lighting is really good, especially with car sales. I've noticed that a lot of car sales lots really like to, and maybe it's just with dealers more, but they just love to light up the lot, you know, for whatever reason. And I hear that comment a lot, but two things I thought I would tell you. One is that I don't see any light poles that I can remember on the front half of this lot, maybe there's one or two along that driveway. So any light poles that are going to go in would have to meet our current lighting standards. And our current lighting standards with the county...
20 feet in height.
Are limited to 20 feet of height, and they also have a limit of, I think it's 0.5 foot candles at the property line, which I've been out at nighttime having to measure the light before, and that's actually pretty darn strict, surprisingly strict. So under the county's current lighting standards, if they have to put in any new lighting today, I'm saying this because I hope, I want the neighbors to know that today's standards, we have ways of dealing with that.
Right, it's way different.
Yeah.
Than what it was. I understand. Okay, any other questions?
Yeah, just to clarify, the issue of lighting on the bottom, the southern portion of that site, does this conditional use permit have anything to do with that?
No.
I mean, that's beyond our consideration, right?
I guess we could have code enforcement investigate those lights when they went in, if they got a permit for them, what year the lighting went in, things like that. We could have that checked on and enforce the lighting standard of the 0.5 foot candles at the property lines, but we'd have to investigate when those lights went in, but that's certainly something that we can have neighborhood preservation look into.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Going to go ahead and close this meet, this part of the meeting, and ask for the commission to comment on it. Do you guys have any comments on this?
Yeah, I am back from years and years of experience.
All right.
I have gotten signed permits 20, 30 times, various things, and mine, most of the time, the city councils have to approve it. Do your signed permits here, do they go in front of the county council for final approval? How do they get final approval?
Through staff, they have to meet the ordinance of the county, so everyone has to meet the same ordinance.
For instance, you know, I have to have an engineering drawing with specs and electrical permits, and all sorts of things, and sometimes it takes Webster Grove's two meetings for the city to approve a sign. Now, that's maybe more than you got, but it's pretty strict on here when you say that pole sign must be removed. If you'd say you're going to alter it to bring it in compliance, that you're going to need a new permit and meet existing regulations, I think that's better said than, remove means tear that big thing out of the ground. I don't like it. I went by there, but it's been there for my lifetime, that I remember, but altered in such a way that you can get a new permit would be a little more gracious than saying, tear that one out and put a new one in.
And...
We can do that.
And yes, you guys can alter that condition any way you choose.
Is that something, do you want to change it?
Well, the idea of remove, to me, means come and get the concrete out and everything else underneath of it. You've got a structure there, obviously it's in the right place.
Right.
Where they would want it, and say, hey, just rehab it to meet our new compliance, be appropriate with the county code and get your permit.
Okay.
But it can be, to get it...
If you...
I would just, condition six.
Well, if you struck that condition, then if he altered the sign more than 50% of its value according to the ordinance, he'd have to come into compliance. So that's what would happen if you just struck that condition. You don't have to condition it unless you want to say if they alter it 25% of its value, then they have to come in compliance. But the ordinance, as Robert said, reads 50%, so I think the current ordinance meets what I think you're talking about. So you could just strike this condition, you don't have to worry about...
So you can just take the condition out completely?
You can do that.
Okay. Roger's made a motion to remove, no?
I'm going to get that.
Oh, you're going to, all right, all right. Don't sneak it in like that, Roger, so go ahead. Any other, any other discussion, you guys, on this? Okay.
I move, we pass CUP 15-11 with staff recommendations 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 7, and 8.
Okay, we have a motion.
Second.
I would second it, yes.
Mr. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
Passes 7 to none. Okay.
Just so you know, this does go...
Just for the council, not regarding him, just so I know in the future if I ever come back to this again. If he doesn't answer your question, if we put up, if we came up and we asked the council, and then you led him to his last, and then he got up and talked, did he answer our question?
We had the staff...
We don't have any way of stating whatever he said.
So it's, so Mike, it's up to us to ask those questions of him. So I'm sorry, sir, we got to move on, I'm sorry, we got to move on. I'm sorry, we got to move on. I understand. Four acres. He did answer the question, that's right.
It was 2.3 when we came in.
He's allowed for the automobile sales.
All right, so we're going to move on to, I think we have to, this was tabled, so we have to have a motion to remove this from the table.
So move.
And we have a second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, Plumbary Platt 15-12, the Plumbary Platt for Lakeview Acres at 2627 Easten Bath Road. The engineering is done by Metron Surveying and Layout Company. The owner developer is Michael W. and Cheryl A. Vogt. The property zoning is A Agricultural, five acre minimum lot size. The number of lots are five, and the location is on the north side of Easten Bath Road, west of Goldfinch Drive, and it's in Council District 1. Do you want to come up and raise your right hand, swear to tell the truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your name and address for the record, please.
Michael Vogt, 2627 Eisenbath, O'Fallon.
Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, we bought our property in 1984 from a developer who bought a farm of 125 acres, and he divided it into five acre lots. So I'm just repeating what was done in 1984.
Right.
I'm not a developer, but I want, we have three sons, and we want our sons to have a lot, each to have a lot.
Okay. Any questions for Michael? Okay, that's it, thank you. Anybody in the room that wants to speak on this matter, we're going to open up to the public. Looks like seeing none, we're going to go ahead and close the public meeting and bring it back to the commission.
It's a beautiful area.
Yeah.
My neighborhood.
I don't have a digital computer, but...
It's okay.
This is what you're voting on.
You've got it in the packet, I mean...
There are the changes.
Oh, there have been changes on it? Okay, what are the changes? Anything significant?
The, I'm sorry, I'm not in the microphone. The arrangement of the cul-de-sac has changed a bit.
Oh, I see it, yeah.
Because we had to get the curvature of the street to meet the county ordinances, and the cul-de-sac width had to increase. They, we've also created an outlot, there's an outlot A where the existing house is, because the ordinance in the agricultural district allows you to split off a three acre piece around an existing residence, and so that's what they're doing, that's going to be just, around the residence is going to be just over four acres, and then all the other lots are five acres in size, so. So the plat does meet our requirements.
Okay.
The road, Lakeview Acres Drive, is that going to be a private?
Yes, private street.
Okay.
Probably, I can't remember if it's going to be gravel or paved. Most of the streets up in this area are gravel.
A gravel street?
Yep, they are permitted to have gravel streets, and when you're serving lots that are three acres or larger in size.
Wow, yeah, I guess that makes sense.
Yeah, in private, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it doesn't have to meet any standard, yeah. Okay. Any other questions, you guys? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Motion and second. Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Mr. Frown votes yes. Mr. Leonard?
Yes.
Mr. Coon?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Setley?
Yes.
And that's a 7-0 also. All right, so what do we have? Approval of the minutes?
Fireworks.
Oh, that's where we got the fireworks thing, yeah, thank you. Where is it? What did I do with it?
The fireworks regs are the same as they were last year, and I talked to Rocky Morgan, and we didn't have any major problems with any of the fireworks stands, so we kept the regulations the same.
Okay.
Because we're almost at fireworks season.
It is time.
Mm-hmm, public hearing will be in March.
Okay. And the minutes, need a motion?
Oh, I need you to, I think...
Do we have to do something on that?
Yeah, I think we need you to vote on the fireworks regs.
Motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Okay, well, actually, the minutes were before the fireworks, other business. Oops. All right, minutes for approval. You guys had a chance to review them, I need someone to approve those minutes, please.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thanks.